Good evening. I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barron.
Here.
Mr. Bradley. Ms. Cavell.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Rosenblum.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That takes us to our next item, and the recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. We're all set. Kim, you're all set?
Yep.
Okay. The recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. The motion carries. The next is, everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we recognize our state award winners, I would like to read our mission statement because I think that's the why of why we are here. Township High School District 211 serves the needs of our diverse community by providing relevant and rigorous learning experiences, opportunities for involvement, and strong support systems that empower all students to reach their full potential. Thank you. And that'll lead us right into our state award winners.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Assistant Superintendent Josh Schumaker, who will start the recognitions of some wonderful student athletes we have here tonight.
Board of Education, Dr. Small, thank you for taking time to honor some very talented athletes tonight. Tonight, you will be introduced to two of our state medalists from our fall season. Athletes, as your coach comes over to introduce you, please walk forward towards the podium, receive your award from your principal, and stand next to the podium as they speak about you. Additionally, if any family members are present tonight, please stand and be recognized as well while they talk about your athlete. Assisting with awards presentations tonight are Palatine High School Principal Tony Medina and Fremd Principal Mark Langer. Our first coach and team tonight, I am honored to introduce Joe Parks from Palatine High School Boys Cross Country. Joe is a dedicated wellness teacher and driver education teacher at Palatine High School and has been a head cross-country coach for 16 years. His teams have brought home five state trophies, including the title in 2009. In total, 18 of his athletes have earned all-state finishes, and Joe has twice been named the Illinois Cross Country Coach of the Year. Coach Parks.
All right. I just want to first thank the Board and Dr. Small for the opportunity to recognize these fine young men. I'm going to introduce Alex Krieg. He's a junior at Palatine. Come on up, Alex. Alex is here with his parents, Scott and Jennifer, and his brother Mason, who I was fortunate enough to introduce a couple times up here as well over the last few years. Alex was our top runner not only this year, but in last year as well. This award for him is kind of a long time coming. He likely would have been up here as a freshman. He got sick before the state meet, and then last year as a sophomore, he qualified but had an unfortunate run-in with an electrical box on the course that was not very well marked. But, you know, he's a model of persistence and consistency. Alex's run, I'll let him say, how many days is it?
Over 1,100.
It's like over 1,100 straight days in a row that this young man has run. He's not missing an entire day in high school, and that's just a part of what makes him who he is. He's just a quiet, consistent leader who just shows up every day and does absolutely any and everything you ask him to do. He was the runner-up at our conference. Our conference was arguably the toughest conference this year competitively wise. We had four teams contending within the top 10 in the state meet. He was a runner-up in that, helped lead us to a conference championship. He also helped lead us to an MSL West title as well this year. And he's not done, so I look forward to hopefully the opportunity to bring him up here again over the next few seasons. So, all right, thank you.
Also honored to introduce Matt Zaluski, Fremd High School Boys Cross Country. Coach Zaluski is in his 11th year of teaching and has been a member of the math department at Fremd High School for the past five years. In addition to coaching Boys Cross Country, Matt is also the coach of the distance athletes for Fremd's track team. Coach.
First of all, again, thank you, Dr. Small, and the Board for allowing us to recognize these amazing athletes, and to Coach Parks and Alex and the entire Palatine team. We had a lot of fun battling you guys this year. As you talked about their West title and the conference title, we were able to take the regional from them, so that was a lot of fun to compete against them this year. Here today with us, Father Maury, his mother Megan, and grandmother Judy, is Fremd senior Rory Gann. This fall, Rory finished off one of the best cross-country careers by a Fremd runner in a very long time. As he finished seventh at the IHSA State Meet, covering the three-mile course in impressive 14 minutes and 21 seconds, the fastest time by a Fremd athlete ever on the state meet course. The second fastest is also Rory from his junior year. During his career, he was a three-time all-conference athlete, finishing the top five at the conference meet three times. He was a two-time regional champion both this year and last year, helping the team win the title as well. He's a three-time state qualifier and a two-time all-state runner after finishing ninth last season. This man is not only a hard worker on the course, but also in the classroom, and will be continuing both his academic and athletic career next year at Dartmouth College. Rory Gann.
Pardon me? Pictures very briefly. You're not ready? No, we need to do pictures. Okay. All right. I thank you very much. I thank our student athletes for everything that you do and all the talents that you share within your school and your classroom, and thank you to the parents for all the support that you provide, because it's not easy getting the kids to different places and, you know, providing support for not only your own student, but for all the entire teams. So I thank you very much. We are going to take a couple of pictures very briefly, and then we will continue with our business portion of the meeting. Okay, our next item on the agenda is public comments, and the Board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the Board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your, excuse me, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper at the end of the board table here. All right. Our first speaker is Magda Roth, followed by Sophia Polisi. Put the microphone a little bit closer to you. All right. Thank you.
Hello, honorable Board members and guests. My name is Magdarad. Yes, I am living in Palatine, so my family is going to your school. I'm a relatively recent member of this community. I have an accent. I have a tendency to speak too fast. If I do, please say like this, and I will try to slow down. Nabila Said, it is my state representative, and I heard her in a number of speeches saying that she is the generation which grew up with the active shooter drills. This is heartbreaking. Unfortunately, the solution what we hear from a number of politicians is transforming schools in fortresses and teachers and faculty in armed marksmen. United States has by far the highest number of guns per civilian in the world, about 120 per 100 residents. Second Amendment is sacrosanct. Really, it is. But if somebody wants to go hunting, be my guest. But hunting people is not allowed, is not a good idea, and it creates tremendous problem. According to the Declaration of Independence, which I had to learn when I got my citizenship, we have the inalienable right to life, liberty, and happiness, to life. Your right to have a gun does not override my right to have a life. In June 2018, I was participating in a voter registration program at Sensibina Church in the South Side, and a number of young people from Parkland, Florida, who had a shooting in their school a few months before, came to talk. They established the March for Our Lives, and we have representatives of the chapter in this area. To my knowledge, it is the first time that the group--
You have one minute remaining.
Oops, okay. I was always impressed of the students, how much they care not only about their situation, but about other situations. Shootings occur all over. There are a number of organizations which fight against guns and shooting. The only way to change it is through legislation, and the only way to affect legislation is by vote. So please, we need citizens, young people, who know their rights, who are convinced to vote, who are informed voters. Voting, it is the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophia Polisi, followed by Jessica Hinkle.
Hello, my name is Sophia Polici. You guys can hear me, right? Okay. Good evening, Board members. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Sophia Polici, and I am an eighth-grade student in the advanced math class, M328, at Schaumburg High School. I enjoy being in M328 because it gives me the chance to dive deeper into complex math concepts and really explore how they work. It challenges me, and it feels satisfying when I finally figure out the solution to a difficult math problem or when I apply a complex concept. I always work really hard to do the best I can in class, and I'm excited about trigonometry next year, and I know that this class is a stepping stone for that. Even though I like being in M328, there are some things that have made learning harder. It's been really challenging trying to figure out the homework on days when we don't have math and there isn't a recorded lesson. It's frustrating and slows me down because instead of learning the methods in class, I often have to figure out how to solve the problems on my own. And even when we have a recorded lesson, there are only very surface-level example problems. A lot of times, I have to do research online about the best strategies to use or how to take on the more complicated problems in the homework because the materials I'm given aren't enough, which means that I don't always have a complete understanding of the reasoning behind the concepts. So even if I can solve the problem, I may not totally understand why it works that way. That's also important because our test questions usually go in-depth about the reasoning behind the concept, which wouldn't have been covered in a brief video lesson. Without the in-depth materials, I can't apply what I've learned without direct examples. All of this is important because all of these math concepts are foundational to trigonometry and calculus. I don't want to drop this class because if I do, I won't have another math class to take at MEAD, and I won't be able to take trigonometry next year. But I also know that if I had more time with my teacher, I could do better in this class and be more prepared for next year. Today, I am asking for your support, not because I don't want to do the work or because I want it to be easy, but because I want to do my best. I want to be prepared for honors trigonometry.
You have one minute remaining.
Okay. I want to be prepared for honors trigonometry, and the best way to do that is to have the ability to get all the resources I need. That means being able to attend class every day that I can, being able to ask questions and go deeper into concepts. Sometimes I've felt that because I'm in an advanced class, people don't think I need as much help. But even though I can learn things quickly, it doesn't mean I don't need assistance when I'm having trouble. So today, I'm asking for your assistance. Please help make more resources available for the eighth-grade M328 students so we can be prepared for the future and achieve our full potential. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jessica Hinkle, followed by Jax George.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jessica Hinkle. I am a Schaumburg High School parent, and obviously a member of the community. So why I'm here today is that this is a request to any of the Board members who are here today to add a Board Member Accountability Policy Discussion to new business. As you're all aware, you took an oath to serve the students and the community as elected Board members and to properly represent the community on important discussions leading to decision-making. Attendance and commitment is critical. We have a policy in place for our students that, for attendance and tardiness, sorry, for attendance and tardiness, so as a Board member, you should be held to similar expectations and really should be the examples to our students that you represent. For example, we have three Board members who attendance through the course of their term has been subpar. In 2023, one Board member missed five of the 13 Board meetings, and in 2024, missed five of the 18. Another Board member missed three of the 13 Board meetings in 2021, four of the 13 in 2022, four of the 13 in 2023, and three of the 18 in 2024. By missing these meetings combined, they did not represent their constituents when voting was taking place on things like student user fees, budget, proposed levies, superintendent selection, tax appeals, and policy revisions, which include fees and reduced pricing for food services, just to share a few. And this is just examples from open session. They have also missed votes in closed session on students and teachers facing disciplinary actions.
One minute remaining.
The third Board member has had good attendance. However, they have been late to five of the last 18 meetings, which is almost as critical because it causes a disruption to the Board agenda and is disrespectful to the other Board members and administration. Their time is just as valuable as yours. I believe the Board should create a policy that requires Board members uphold the commitment they signed up for, and if for some reason they cannot uphold that, that there should be a written policy to allow the other Board members to remove them. Additionally, I believe the policy should require committee meetings to actually take attendance and have a minimum attendance requirement for the designated Board of Education members. I think the timing right now is critical since we have a new election cycle upon us. This would provide new candidates clear expectations of being a Board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Jax George, followed by Alan Alendi.
Hello, my name is Jax George, and I'm speaking as one of the many representatives from March for Our Lives Palatine here today. So I'm a former graduate of Palatine High School. I graduated in the classes 2024, and I've been a co-lead of March for Our Lives Palatine for the last two years. March for Our Lives Palatine is a local chapter of March for Our Lives, which is a national youth-led grassroots movement, hoping to end the epidemic of gun violence through youth civic engagement and youth activism. Starting early in the spring of this year, March for Our Lives Palatine has been focusing on trying to increase voter education and registration around the district, reaching out to many Board members and staff members of multiple schools across the district, some of like the principals we saw today, such as Miss Medina and all the other principals. Today, I'm going to be talking about voter partisanship. Increasing voter registration and activism is extremely important as voting allows students and different members of the community to make the government work for us, one of the key principles of our government and the foundation of our government. However, many young adults in District 211 are disconnected from this very important There is little information given to students, where there are very rare talks about how to vote, or most obsolete discussion about anything political in class due to fears of being partisan. While it's understandable in this day and age to be concerned, to be concerned with being partisan, the students of District 211 are the future leaders, politicians, and activists of this generation and of this country. It's a grave disservice to not properly prepare our youth to be a part of the political process that affects every aspect not only our lives, the lives of many generations before us and after us. Therefore, we can no longer exclude voter registration and education from our curriculum under the guise of not being partisan. What is key to understand that we are not asking for students and staff to hold potentially heated and controversial conversations regarding voting and different processes in the political process and happenings. What we are asking for is for students and staff to be able to talk about political process outside the foundations of our governments through the constitutional shell of Congress and voting.
Yeah, one minute remaining.
As a district, District 211 needs to better equip students for discussions, curriculum, and drives aimed at teaching how the political process personally affects all. For example, there should be information on how to register your vote, how to use mail-in and absentee ballots, and what offices and positions are typically on the ballot in our area. And there should be yearly voter registration drives at every school across the district to ensure the students have access to all this information and are able to answer their questions. All this is essential in order to be able to create the best educated individuals in our district, and I personally urge you not only to hear out not only my comments, but the comments of the other speakers today, but to take action and make change to ensure that we have the best chance to be the most informed citizens possible. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Alan Alendi, followed by Isabella Amana.
Good evening, Board members. My name's Alan Alendi. I'm a senior at Palatine High School, and this is my first year as a co-lead for March for Our Lives Palatine. Growing up, I didn't have the resources or encouragement I needed to fully understand the importance of voting or even how to register. I remember being in class where voter registration was covered briefly in a student-led presentation. It was presented once and then never mentioned again. For those who didn't qualify to vote yet, it felt irrelevant. So many didn't pay attention. Outside of that single presentation, there were no additional discussions, no follow-ups, and no real emphasis on how important voting is. Even in conversations with my peers, especially those of Latino descent, voter registration and civic engagement felt like an afterthought, something ignored rather than prioritized. The schools weren't doing enough to make this information accessible and impactful, and it left many of us unprepared. This experience highlights a significant issue. Our schools aren't doing enough to ensure every student is included and empowered to vote. Currently, there are insufficient sustainable resources and little emphasis on voting as an important part of our lives as Americans. This gap must be addressed by both teachers and administrators. Not only that, but equitable consideration must be given to students of color and those in STEM tracks, since it's statistically proven that students from these backgrounds don't contribute as much as other student populations. Every student deserves to learn about their rights, the voting process, and the importance of their voice in our democracy. To fix this, there needs to be a clear and thorough process to guide young adults through voter registration, ensuring they fully understand the significance of their participation in democracy. Addressing racial inequalities in access to voting is crucial, and efforts must be made to put an end to these gaps. It's important to emphasize to students that their vote is their voice, and it has an impact, which, this is fundamental to civic engagement.
You have one minute remaining.
Schools should prioritize educating students about the voting process, possibly through a required curriculum component such as incorporating voting education into social studies classes, which all students take throughout high school. These efforts will then ensure all students receive the resources and knowledge to participate fully in the voting process. I appreciate your patience and consideration. Have a good night.
Thank you. Isabella Amana, and then followed by Yuna Lee.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Isabella Amanye, and I'm a senior at Fremd High School and a co-lead for March for Our Lives Palatine. I'm here today to share a student perspective on an issue that impacts not just individuals, but the future of democracy as a whole. Yet, in schools, the truth is often overlooked. Little emphasis is placed on voting as a core part of the American identity. Students learn about the Constitution, landmark elections, and key historical moments, but we rarely connect these lessons to the role we play in shaping the future through voting. Many of us feel uncertain and disconnected when it comes to the voting process. One of the most significant gaps in voter education is equitable access, especially for students of color and those on STEM tracks. While civic education is mandatory for graduation, students pursuing STEM often have demanding schedules that leave little room for civic engagement beyond the required curriculum. As a result, they may graduate without the same opportunities to engage deeper discussions about voting and democracy. And for students of color, the challenge is even more profound due to the systematic inequities that create additional barriers in accessing accurate voter information. I propose that we implement a step-by-step voter registration educational initiative that's put into classes that students take for all four years. Each of us has unique experiences, concerns, and dreams for our community and our country as a whole. By starting with us, high school students, we can foster a culture of informed, active participation that carries on into adulthood, making our voices heard and shaping the communities we envision. Incorporating voter education into our high school experience ensures that when we turn 18, we aren't just eligible to vote, but we are empowered to do so. We can teach students how to research candidates, understand ballots, and engage in discussions about policies that affect our lives. By empowering students to participate in our democracy, we ensure that their voices and the voices of our most vulnerable communities are heard. We'll be passing out a write-up on the student perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Isabella? I apologize. All right. Then we have Yuna Lu, followed by Lee Burnett. Excuse me, Lee Bennett.
Hi, my name is Junior Lu, and I am a junior at Fremd High School, and I have been a co-lead of March for Our Lives Palatine for the past two years. During November of my third grade year, my parents took me to the polls for the very first time. Watching them tick each box with a ballpoint pen, I realized the power our democracy grants us. Regardless of race, age, gender, or sexuality, we each have a voice which deserves to be heard, and as a collective, we have the ability to change the course of our nation's history. Later, I came to realize how vital it is to the principles of our nation that we, as students, are given the tools we need to be adequately prepared to step up and shape our world even before we enter the ballot box. To me, the purpose of education expands beyond academic prowess towards preparing students to be responsible, informed, and active members of our democracy, and it is thus District 21's responsibility to ensure that we are ready to take charge of our civic lives as adults. By establishing voter registration and voter education curriculums district-wide, we can empower young people by providing them with the skills they need, from media literacy to critical thinking, for success in a democratic society. Through this instruction, we can prove to students that their values truly matter, and in an age where youth voter turnout is at severe risk of decrease, especially in marginalized communities, voter education has become critical to generating an equitable space in which every voice may be equally and accurately represented. Voting is the most direct way one may mold public policy and shape the political landscape of our nation, and access to such a curriculum will equip students with the tools to participate in this process and enhance their dedication to civic duty, thereby ensuring an electorate prepared to carry out the needs of our nation. The previous denials to recognize voter registration by school administrators have been a denial of American democracy. I truly believe establishing a voter registration education curriculum in a district initiative would positively and immensely impact the educational experience for every student at a D211 school. By preparing students to be engaged and empowered citizens, we not only further the quality of their education, but also ensure the vitality and continuity of the civic process. Providing students with the resources and skill sets they need to shape the world, we forge a bright and hopeful future for our nation. After all, education is not simply classrooms filled with facts and questions, but a hand molding an engaged electorate prepared to answer the call of democracy. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Lee Bennett, followed by Wendy Crosley.
Hello, Dr. Small, Mr. Schumacher, Board, staff, and community. I'm Lee Bennett, father of an education major. Our schools have an underperforming group not mentioned in the district equity metrics. This group may not be a minority. This group may not be a minority of the entering freshman class, but they end up being a minority of the graduates. I'm speaking of boys. Author Richard Reeves of Boys and Men: Why the Modern Male is Struggling, Why It Matters, and What to Do About It indicts our country and its educational system in particular of failing to prepare our boys for a world where women are empowered. The book makes the case that changes over recent decades have improved women's lives, but not men's. For example, the rate of participation in the workforce has steadily fallen from eighty percent in 1970 to under 68 percent, and wages have been flat for the median male worker. Studies show that many efforts to improve our education have worked, but only for the girls. Reeves and I don't want to make America great again by returning to the social structures of the 1950s. Instead, we feel our society will be better off when, when empowered women have the choice, choices that include partnering with a capable man. The best-known metric for how our education system has shifted is the enrollment ratio in college. Advocates insisted that Title IX regulations were needed to address the 60-40 advantage men held. It took about a decade for this metric to reach parity, and 25 years for the ratio to flip. Changes have been much slower over the last 25 years, but the trend towards even greater share of women in colleges continues. Among other things, Reeves recommends investing in a "men can heal" initiative to promote the faster-growing
You have one minute remaining.
female-dominated fields of health, education, administration, and literacy to boys. This effort would be modeled off after programs that promote high-paying STEM careers to To Reeves' recommendations, I add my own. Stop limiting competitive sports for boys due to the lower interest of the girls. The notion that males are more interested in competitive sports is not a misogynistic assumption. It's a well established by lots of data, including our district's own, which I presented in October. Since this is a domain that attracts more male interest, it provides additional opportunity for male teachers to be a role model for our boys. Additional opportunities to participate in sports might not solve much of the problems in educating boys, but it would be a symbolic step in a needed direction.
Your speaking time is ended.
As
Please finish your statement and
As was the case 50 years ago, we need to address the needs of the underrepresented sects in our schools. Please note that a different sex is now underrepresented in our education system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Wendy Crossley, resident. Good evening, Board members. I first want to thank you for your commitment to the students and the community. I'm here as a concerned parent and would like to discuss the challenges faced by eighth grade students enrolled in the advanced math program at Schaumburg High School and to seek your support in helping this program live up to what it was always intended to be. An opportunity for some of the best and brightest mathematics students to excel and achieve their full potential. The way the program has been implemented has created some unintended challenges and gaps for these eighth grade students. After the start of the semester, our family was surprised to learn that because of the different schedules across the districts and transportation logistics, eighth grade students would miss 12 math classes each year, as well as part of their class time at the junior high school each day, which amounted to over 50 class hours lost. As the school year progressed, our students shared some of the challenges you heard tonight, when they can't attend math during late start days like their high school peers. Eighth grade students are held to the same standards as their high school peers, but do not have the same access to resources, and there are no other adjustments to their curriculum to address these gaps. Early in the semester, we shared our concerns with the school and district officials, and we were advised that options would be explored to better support students and address these issues. Unfortunately, as the end of the semester approached and students had missed six days of math class, there had been no updates to students or families and very little progress. So today, I'm here to respectfully ask you, our Board, to please help students receive the resources and support they need to be better, to be able to achieve their academic goals. As a parent, I know
One minute remaining.
that I don't fully understand the complexities of the board system and the education system. However, I trust that this Board, Administration, and Education educators at both districts are intelligent and dedicated individuals. We ask that the, that the Board encourage that collaboration, and I help identify short-term and long-term solutions, such as allowing students to attend math class on late start days, even if this requires some coordination with District 54, consistently providing asynchronous materials for these students, and on, on a long-term basis, ask the Board to consider creating a policy that would allow future eighth grade students to take the class in District 54 and receive high school credit. Throughout this process, I've always believed that educators and administrators want what is best for students. I ask that you consider what is best for students today and support eighth grade students in Math 328. Thank you.
I thank all of our speakers this evening, and I would really like to thank our students for sharing your insights on the importance of voting. I think that that's really important. And I think if I heard you correctly, you have some suggestions. So if you do have suggestions, I'd like you to, to forward them on to Mr. Teniper, which can then be shared with the Board and Dr. Small, and then taking it back to, to the schools. So I thank you again for that. That concludes our public comments. Our next item of business is going to be the public hearing on the proposed 2024 tax levy. So if you want to give Mr. Teniper your information, that's great. You could do that now. If you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you could do that. All right. All right, then that takes us to our public hearing on the proposed 2024 tax levy. There's going to be two motions. We'll open it up for the hearing, and then we will close the hearing. The first recommended motion is that in accordance with Section 5/17-1.3 of the Illinois School Code, cash balances are reported in Item C, excuse me, Item 7.0C of tonight's meeting agenda and the public hearing on the proposed 2024 tax levy of Township High School District 211 is now open. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, any discussion? All right, and it's a voice vote. Those in favor of opening up the meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So the meeting, the public hearing is now open. I do have one speaker, and Jessica Hinkle. So if you'd like to come up to the podium. And we'll follow the same rules in regards to the public comments. I only have one person signed up, so if, we can do for five minutes for speaking if, if you need to.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jessica Hinkle Still, and I'm still a member of the community. So as per this District 211 Board Policy, DCA, operating fund balance, the Board of Education should target an operating fund balance excluding non-expendable fund balance of approximately 33% of next year's budget expenditures, representing about four months of operations. Over the past several years, the budget has been presented supposedly as a planned deficit budget to decrease excessive reserves. However, each of those years resulted in significant surpluses. Why is this happening? It is clear to me that the budget is not accurate, and as a result, the taxpayers are getting squeezed for no reason. I know there are a lot of people out there that say they're okay with paying higher taxes because our children's education is worth it. However, when the money that is collected from higher taxes is not used for the students and just put into investment funds, how is this actually helping the students? Quite honestly, I think it's having an opposite effect for many community members. Many Board members ran on the topic of equity. When you tax a community excessively to the point that the middle and lower-class income families cannot afford to live in the district, who are you actually serving? Unless the Administration can explain where the $58 million that is unassigned in the current fund balance is actually going to be used, you as Board members, the advocates of the community, should be voting no to the proposed tax increase. If you vote yes, it is clear, it is a clear indication that you either don't understand how budgets work, you don't represent the community, or you're trying to create a community of just upper-class people. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have anyone else signed up to speak in regards to the public hearing. All right, so then that way, the next will be a motion to close the public hearing. The recommended action is that the public hearing on the proposed 2024 tax levy of Township High School District 211 is now closed. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, again, that'll be a voice vote, so those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So the public hearing is now closed. That will take us to our presentation, and we have a presentation on the strategic plan update, excellence of staff.
Madam President, can we take a quick break?
I beg your pardon?
Can we take a quick break?
All right.
Just really quick.
All right, now for our presentation, Dr. Small. Tonight, Director of Human Resources, Dr. Britton, as well as Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Teniper, are going to present a strategic plan update regarding our 2,000 employees in District 211.
Good evening. During the development of our strategic plan, District 211's excellent staff was frequently noted by all stakeholder groups as one of the district's strongest resources. Consequently, one of the 10 goals in the strategic plan is devoted to developing and nurturing this resource. This is an acknowledgement that our staff is a critical piece in carrying out the mission of our organization. Goal number eight reads like this. All students will have exceptional learning opportunities through the attainment and development of a highly effective staff. Obviously, there are other important ingredients to creating great educational experiences for our students, but our caring and dedicated staff are the foundation of these experiences. Within goal eight, there are three indicators that we will talk about tonight: professional development and growth, staff wellness support systems, and hiring a diverse staff. Each of these indicators plays an important role in ensuring that our staff continues to be one of our greatest strengths for years to come. A deep pool of talented teachers cannot be guaranteed, especially with signs pointing to educator shortages in the years to come, so we are taking steps to address our future shortages by focusing on the resources that are accessible to us right now, our students and our staff. At our last board meeting, you heard a presentation by Michelle Napier and Josh Schumaker on post-secondary success in our career pathways. For the education pathway, District 211 provides a series of courses that allow students to explore education as a career, and in these courses, students spend over 60 hours in hands-on learning environments, in our in-house preschool labs, in the District 15 or 54 classrooms, and even District 211 classrooms. These experiences solidify students' interests in education as a career, as well as prepare them for the journey of becoming a teacher. In October of this year, Mrs. Napier coordinated an event hosted at Northern Illinois University for 250 District 211 students interested in becoming educators. I want to clarify, this wasn't an event at Northern Illinois for any school to attend. Our district planned and facilitated this event exclusively for our students. At this event, students were able to get a closer look at various careers in education, collaborating with professors and college students to learn more about the preparation and support a prospective educator receives during their undergraduate experience. And then also, when the strategic plan began three years ago, we began a senior exit survey to identify those graduates with an interest in a career in education, and the first cohort of those graduates will be seniors next year. So this spring, we will be reconnecting with these alumni to position them well to begin a career, potentially in District 211. And then, under our staff-based initiatives, we focused on fostering professional growth through strategic partnerships. We have a number of teacher assistants who are currently working toward their professional educator license, most of which are in high-needs areas like ESL or bilingual and special education. Universities like National Lewis and companies like Bloom Board have set up effective programs to address teacher shortages by designing programs that allow for short-term licensers in areas of high need.
To thrive as a learning organization, we must continually evolve and adapt to the rapidly changing world. We crafted a broad goal to allow flexibility in addressing the emerging needs, many of which were unforeseen even three years ago. For instance, we could not have foretold the very significant increases we have seen in our students with English language learning needs. To address the needs of our growing student population and the adjustments we've had to make to our instructional programming, we recognize the importance of providing additional professional development for our teachers to better support these students. In the second semester last year, we began the planning of launching a program designed to enhance teacher skills and knowledge in instructing bilingual students. This initiative also offers an opportunity for educators to earn ISBE, recognized state endorsements as bilingual and ESL educators through the Illinois Resource Center in partnership with National Lewis University. This year, 31 of our teachers have begun the courses to meet the requirements for bilingual or ESL endorsement. We have a range of teachers, from first-year teachers to 20-year-plus veterans, who recognize the value of developing instructional strategies to meet the needs of students whose primary and sometimes only language is not English. In 1994, I began my career as a teacher. Back then, floppy disks, speedy dial-up internet, and the early days of this thing called World Wide Web were cutting-edge. And a small startup began selling books from Jeff Bezos's garage. Just as technology has rapidly evolved, so too must educators. To address the ever-changing needs of students, we can't just rely solely To address the ever-changing needs of students, we can't just rely solely on what we learned at the start of our careers. Today's challenges and opportunities are entirely new, requiring us to stay equipped to guide our students. Professional development isn't optional; it's essential to prepare students for an unpredictable but exciting future. This semester, our technology department, our technology department chairs have provided professional development to teachers and school leaders on leveraging artificial intelligence to enhance teaching and learning. And in the second week of January, we'll extend this training to all schools, helping support staff harness AI's potential to improve efficiency. Now let me share a minor example of how this could apply. Fresh off of my AI training, I was having a conversation with a principal's administrative assistant who was once again sharing that she was repeatedly asked questions about our tuition reimbursement process from our teachers. We concluded, you know, what we need to do is develop a guide, so we can just hand it to students, or to teachers, that will walk them through the process. So I uploaded our teacher's contract into ChatGPT and provided a prompt for it to read the contract and provide guidance on what teachers need to do to qualify for tuition reimbursement. It gave me something, I said, "Give me a little more detail," and then it generated a categorized document like this one in front of you. So the principal administrative assistant and I went through it, the output, we made some changes, and in a few moments, we were done. What would have taken well over an hour took about 15 minutes.
As you heard from Dr. Britton, professional development can play an important role in the ongoing development of our staff, and indicator 8.3, which we're moving into now, aims to support employees by focusing on the wellness and support systems that we provide for our staff. Workplace Solutions is our employee assistance provider. They provide a range of services, including those listed on this slide. Through the efforts of our Director of Benefits, Helen Miller, and members of the Wellness Committee, which is comprised of representatives from each school, we have been promoting the different ways that employees can capitalize on EAP's resources. After an informational meeting at one school, three employees contacted Workplace Solutions for help with elder care solutions, and while an employee at another school contacted Workplace Solutions for assistance in their role as executor of a family member's will. The Wellness Committee is also an important resource for supporting the physical and mental health of our faculty. These committee members are responsible for informing our staff of the various resources we provide, such as Workplace Solutions and other wellness resources. They are also instrumental in coordinating our health and wellness screenings connected to our insurance. In their buildings, they also lead various healthy lifestyle initiatives like exercise or fitness challenges, and they have created care packages for staff members, they've organized therapy dog visits, and they have created mindfulness rooms. At Hoffman Estates High School, Wellness Coordinator Wade Heisler provides the staff at his school with a monthly newsletter, as you can see on the screen, and he organizes regular informational sessions about wellness initiatives that he calls firesides. He's also created an after-school workout group for staff that meets twice a week, while providing resources for teachers to use at their, at home with their family on nutrition counseling and family activities. Mr. Heisler explains that he wants the teachers at Hoffman Estates to model healthy behaviors in front of students so that they begin to understand that wellness is a lifelong pursuit.
Recruitment remains a critical focus for our district. We've refined our strategies by expanding efforts to reach historically underrepresented groups and leveraging social media to reach a broader audience. Our efforts have resulted in progressive increases in the applicants of color, which in turn has helped us in meeting the goal of diversifying our staff. This summer, we held our second annual District 211 Job Fair and used multiple platforms to advertise it, including using video ads like this.
At District 211, we're dedicated to making sure students have the knowledge and skills needed to reach their full potential. Every employee is part of this effort. We're hiring now for food service workers, bus drivers, teachers assistants, custodians, and more. Make a difference, create your story here.
Since setting this goal, we've made steady progress, meeting our target last year and actually exceeding it this year. A more diverse applicant pool increases the likelihood of hiring educators from varied backgrounds, enhancing staff representation to better reflect our student population. This diversity brings broader perspectives, enriches the educational environment, and promotes equity. The data underscores the value of ongoing efforts to attract diverse candidates and highlights our progress, even as we work toward achieving full proportional representation. This chart shows our current student demographics and compares it to our educators. It is obvious that there are significant differences. Our student body continues to change, but we are also making significant inroads with our staff. This chart compares our new hires over the past three school years and compares it to our student body, showing that our hires now better reflect our students. It highlights our initiatives, including creating a hiring toolkit to support candidate screening and interviews, and fostering professional development focused on equity and diversity. Among these hires is Jenny Hong, a former engineer with a Purdue degree in engineering and two master's degrees in engineering, one from Santa Clara University and the other from Northwestern. She now teaches applied tech and math while finishing up an EL endorsement. Fluent in Mandarin, she brings unique expertise and perspective to her classroom. Also included in our new hires is Alejandro Mercado, a Spanish-speaking wellness teacher, overcoming challenges similar to those faced by our students. As a competitive boxer, she literally and figuratively fought through to a path in education. Her video interview revealed qualities far beyond what a transcript or resume could show. Take a listen.
If you can build those relationships with all your students, you could have a life-lasting impact on them. I know that's kind of what happened to me in my school, and that's what influenced me to make the decision to come back and be an educator. I was a student who was not interested in academics, and I, it took one PE teacher to come into my life and tell me that I could do it, and I had leadership skills, and I was capable of anything I set my mind to, and they said it to me enough times that I finally started believing in it myself and came a long way. And I think that's where you define success as a teacher, is building relationships with your students that could have lifelong impact and even life-altering impacts on
This chart, downloaded from our school report card data, and a little difficult to see in this presentation, but it illustrates the demographics of our teachers over the past 10 years. Historically, our teacher demographics have remained unchanged, staying at 88% white for many years, well before even the timeframe shown in this chart. However, since establishing a specific goal to address this, we've seen progress. Over the last three years, our teacher diversity has increased by 1% each year. While this may seem like a small shift, with nearly 1,000 licensed educators and an annual hiring rate between 20 and 50 individuals, this change takes time. The progress, the gradual, is measurable and significant, and it's meaningful. Jenny or Alejandro may very well be that one teacher that our students will talk about, that they saw themselves in and inspired them to be an educator themselves.
As with anything, the things that you prioritize have the best chance of coming to fruition, and we've been very intentional in our approach to staff wellness, to professional development, and to hiring, and the results support that. Thank you for your time listening to our presentation, and we will now take time for questions.
Thank you very much. I'll start with Ms. Barron.
Thank you so much for your presentation tonight and being here with us. I really appreciate it, all the information that you shared. No questions, but just, as always, I love to hear from our students, and I love to hear like all the experiences that they have, and like that powerful impact that teachers can have just connecting with their students, and the representation that we're increasing and our students can see themselves in. I know that I wouldn't be here today without those impactful teachers that I had in District 211 while I was many years ago, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenbloom?
Thank you very much for the presentation. As you know, as an HR professional myself, I'm very pleased with the additional efforts that we're doing as a school district to encourage our students to become educators. My daughter is now an educator in District 15, and she was inspired to become an educator from one of her teachers at Schaumburg High School, who made a difference to her, and she wanted to emulate that and give back the way that he did to her, and now she has aspirations well beyond teaching, but certainly still in the education world. So, so I know how important that is, and it was great to hear that student, that, I think, former student who, who had that, that teacher, that inspiration within our district as well during her video interview. So, so that's really what it's about: our educators doing good, building relationships with the students, and it's great to hear many of the things that you're already working on and having success with. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Cavell?
Thank you for the presentation. I reflect previous comments. I do want to ask you to pass on my congratulations to Michelle Napier for that event that she organized, which sounds phenomenal. I knew I wanted to be a teacher when I was a sophomore in high school because of a teacher, not from here, downstate, similar philosophy and experience, so that was great, but that sounds like a huge achievement, so fantastic to her. I do have a clarifying question, and it is about the comments you made regarding the use of ChatGPT, which, yep, that's an example of what it's good at doing, so that's great. I just want to make sure to clarify, when you put our contract in, you were using our ChatGPT Enterprise portal, right? So we're going to clarify for the community that it's not just the go-to OpenAI and use their publicly available model, and I, I just wanted to make sure that on the record that that's, that's what we're doing, right? We're using the in-house. Yes? And that's important to clarify, of course, because, you know, part of that commitment is that it stipulates that the data we put in, such as our employment contract, is not going to be used to train any of OpenAI's generative AI projects. So I'm pleased to hear that, that's fantastic, and thank you again for the presentation. There's a lot of exciting stuff going on.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dombrowski?
Thank you. The information was thorough, well-presented. I'm torn, because obviously there's not enough engineers out there, and you're poaching the best, obviously, Purdue-educated engineers, but congratulations on inquiring a Purdue engineer. Thank you.
There's still time for a career change.
Mr. McGowan?
Absolutely, thank you for the presentation. I guess for our guests that are here, I just, I just want to put everything in context. It's been, I ran on a platform of equity, so this was something I was very passionate about from day one. When I first got to board, we sat down, and we found the district had three big ways we could impact change in the district, and that was hiring more teachers of color, which is the representation, diversifying our curriculum, and development for our staff, our existing staff. And I'm just, I want to commend the district for doing those three things. Here it is, three years later, and we've seen small changes in my business, but I would, I would equate that, the teacher part of it, I would equate to everyone's vision for teachers now. So I think if that weren't the case, and we didn't have the shortage, I think those percentages would be even higher right now, given all the work that we put in. So I just want to resonate this district and let our community members know that there are other districts that aren't even having this conversation. There are other districts who are still in denial, like, hey, we don't have these issues. Our, our student population is extremely happy, everyone's succeeding. That's not the conversation we've had, that's not the tone that this administration, Dr. Small, has taken. I'm just, I'm grateful it's a CED work, and I'm grateful to see what it looks like in another four years. So, thank you.
Okay. I thank you very much for the presentation. I'm glad that we are making progress and we're moving along. That's, that's commendable to, to your departments, and I would really like to commend all of our staff. Please let them know how valued they are and what they're doing for our students, because I know we are demanding a lot of them, and that's important. One of the things that I'm very pleased about is the mental health, the well-being aspect, the social-emotional, because that's really vital, that our staff has that, and then they can demonstrate that to the students. And that's also vital for our administrators here, because you deal with an awful lot, and to our principals, because they deal with more than just students, they deal with the staff, and they deal with parents, and you do need that, you know, ability to have some, some downtime and being able to understand the importance of social-emotional wellness. So I thank you very much. Unless there's any other questions, then we thank you.
Thank you.
And have a good evening. That is going to take us to our consent agenda items, and is there, I do have one request of an item to be removed. Are there any other requests for removal of an item? Okay, then we're going to end up with two motions. The first motion is, recommended action is that the consent agenda be approved as presented with the removal of item number G, Resolutions Authorizing Intervention in Proceedings Before the State Property Tax Appeal Board. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there? Okay, roll call, please. Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz? Aye. All right, the motion carries. The next recommended action is, item letter G, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the resolutions authorizing intervention in proceedings before the State Property Tax Appeal Board, which seek assessed valuation reductions in excess of $100,000 for property tax year 2023. And further authorize Francic as the Board of Education's legal representative to file requests to intervene appeal proceeding forms with the Property Tax Appeal Board on the properties for which the district receives notification of appeal. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz? Aye. The motion carries. That will then take us to our special reports and communication. We have some freedom of information, information there, and if there's no questions, then we'll move on to number nine, our unfinished business. And the first item of action, the recommended action, is- And the first item of action, the recommended action, is that the Board of Education approve the amount of $275,822,000 as the 2024 levy for the Township High School District 211. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask that this board clarify to the community what money is important and what is not. This board will increase the levy amount 4.5% over last year. This is $11,792,000 more than last year. The last budget year ended with $10,846,260 in surplus. Why do we need $11,792,000 more than last year? When the rebates are paid to over-assess property owners and we vote to abate a recapture levy, why are those monies considered a relief and this increase tonight not? If we need $11.8 million tonight, why didn't we need $2,534,745 last December when the supplemental levy was abated? Why do we abate any money from a tax levy if in two years, when the district is sitting on over $57.8 million in unassigned monies, we will approve a look-back clause to add those dollars back in anyway? This is not property owner relief. This is an unchecked greed by an entitled administration that requires this board to be the voice of victimized property owners. Why is the look-back monies more important than the recapture monies? Is one type of monies compounding in perpetuity and more oppressive to the tax base, and the other, a single collection that has a temporary impact? The absolute worst part of this is that the information to make a reasonable assessment of district finances is presented clearly and acutely. It is only by complacency, lack of due diligence, and blind trust that prevents this Board of Education from balancing the needs of the district with fair and reasonable funding requests from the community. This levy is excessive. The documented financial reporting in today's agenda validates this position. To vote for this levy is either a result of ignorance or malice towards our community. Thank you.
Dr. Small, is there anything you wanted to add in regards to the levy?
I will speak to the property tax refund levy as detailed in the agenda in other communications, that as the Cook County Treasurer puts forth more information that we are just starting to get, this will be brought to the board in February to review and then see if they want to take any action on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
My comments to these matters have been repeated ad nauseam, as they are the same arguments that we continue to have over and over and over again. So, just to briefly summarize, I don't believe that homeowners should be paying for the refunds of commercial and business owners' property taxes. That's something I'm unanimously opposed to, speaking to the abatements of the particular levies mentioned in earlier remarks, as well as the fact that those remarks, to me, are only accurate if one eliminates all context of our various financial positions and five-year projections, and which, to me, does not represent sound financial decision-making. As budget projections and prospective costs of our various contracted employees and services, as I've spoken to at the last meeting, are things that we have to plan for rather than react to, as perhaps a business might be able to do on an annual basis. You know, we run a different, very different organization over here. But I'm not going to beat a dead horse. We'll have the same argument next year, and I look forward to tussling again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, if I may. I appreciate everybody's point of view. This is not always, it's not an easy decision. I think that all of us here take this very serious. We do our due diligence, we do our homework. I do not appreciate the name-calling. I think that points can be made without name-calling. And again, I think all of us do our homework and take this very serious, so thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I, I agree with Ms. Barron. Name-calling at the board table of other board members is really unnecessary and uncalled-for, and quite honestly, unprofessional. I, I want to make sure everybody realizes that not only are we elected officials and representatives of the community, we are part of the community. So, whatever actions we take with regards to impacting our constituents, impact us as well. So, I want everybody to keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, any other comments? All right, then may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Ms. Cavell?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The motion carries. Mr. McGowan, can you use the microphone so we make sure that your voice is heard?
Right.
Okay, thank you very much. Then that takes us to the proposed policy revision, GCG, Professional Staff Probation and Tenure. The recommended action is that the board policy file, GCG, Professional Staff Probation and Tenure Policy, be modified as proposed and added as an active board policy on board docs. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The motion carries. The next item is, the recommended action is that board policy file, GHQB, Custodial Maintenance Grievance Procedures, be deleted as a board policy. Further, that the superintendent be directed to remove the policy from active status on board docs. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll, roll call, please?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The motion carries. Next recommended action is that board policy file, GIQB, Cafeteria Grievance Procedures, be deleted as a board policy. Further, that the superintendent be directed to remove the policy from active status on board docs. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The motion carries. Next items are under new business. The recommended action is that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the June 30th, 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which includes the financial statements as prepared by Township High School District 211 and audited by Baker Tilly US LLP, Certified Public Accountants. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Dr. Small?
In accordance with the requirements of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, the district is required to have an independent audit of its financial records, including a test of financial controls completed on an annual basis. The firm of Baker Tilly recently completed the audit of the district's financial statements for the year ending June 30th, 2024, and have issued an opinion thereon. The district's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, referred to as the ACFER, was prepared by Baker Tilly in cooperation with our business office. I am pleased to introduce to you Sebastian Dombrowski, who is here this evening on behalf of the board's accounting firm, Baker Tilly. He will present the Board of Education a brief review of our audit this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Small, and thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. So, Mike Malott, the partner on the audit, who has spoken to you in the past, was unfortunately not able to make it tonight, but my name is Sebastian Dombrowski. I'm a senior audit supervisor with Baker Tilly, and I'm just going to go over briefly the results of the audit. Before I do, I do want to thank Lauren, Barb, Kathy, members of the office, the business office, for all their help in getting the audit completed this year. It is a really big, heavy lift to prepare for the audit, a response to all of our supporting documentation requests, on top of their day-to-day job responsibilities. So, we really appreciate all that help in getting the audit completed and issued. So, I'm not going to go into the specifics on the numbers, I'm just going to kind of go over the reports, what they are, what the results are. So, the first I'll start with is the Reporting and Insights Communication Letter, so that's a letter from us, the auditor, to you, the governing body, that outlines the planned scope of the audit, what our responsibilities are as auditors, your responsibilities as a governing body. If there were any key financial statement finding matters or control, internal control matters, those will be outlined in here. We do do walkthroughs over your internal control processes, so we look at your significant transaction cycles to determine if there's any operational risks that we want to apply additional procedures to. We're happy to report that we did not have any recommendations to your internal controls at this time. They're operating appropriately right now. Outside of that, there's also some communications in here on future accounting updates. There are no new standard implementations for fiscal year 2024, so great news there, makes it a quiet year there. And then I also just want to remind you that we do report to you as the governing board, we are engaged by you. So, if you have any questions or any concerns, we want to be a resource for you, so we look forward to hearing from you, and please don't hesitate to reach out. So, the bulk of the audit was on the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. It's got the full picture of the district's financial position for the year. At the beginning is the transmittal letter and the Management's Discussion and Analysis Letter. I highly recommend reading through those. Quick overview of what went on during the year in a narrative format with comparison to the prior year. The opinion is at the front, near the basic financial statements. It's a four-page opinion, it's an unqualified or unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide over your financial information. That's unchanged from the prior year, so anyone can pick up your financials and rely on the information within. Further on, you've got detailed notes to your financial statements, you've got budgetary to actual comparison schedules in the back, and statistical information that gives you 10 years of long-term trend data, both financial and demographic. Outside of that, we've got some more financial information that gets prepared in the Annual Financial Report that gets submitted to the state board. It's pretty much the same as the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, it's information on top of that. It's got some statutory compliance matters that we look into, it gets presented into a standardized form that gets submitted to the state and put into its repository. No findings there, clean opinion on your AFR. There is page four in the AFR that's got your financial profile score, so the district had recognition status, which is the highest benchmark that the state awards, and also four out of four maximum points on the financial profile score. So, those two reports will cover your financial position. We do do an audit on your federal funding. It's a uniform guidance audit or a single audit, so we come in and we look at the compliance over the spend of your federal funds. Specifically, this year, we tested your education stabilization fund and your idea special education cluster. So, we go in again, look at compliance over how that funding was spent, no findings there, and then we also look at the controls over the programs to assure compliance. And then the last report that we issue is the Comprehensive Financial Year-end Report, the CYFER, it gets submitted to the Grant Accountability and Transparency Unit. No findings there, clean, clean opinion there as well. So, in all four reports, no findings, and with the Annual Comprehensive, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, the business office, Barb Peterson and her team, they prepare that report. It's one of the few districts that we work with that actually prepares its own report, and they do a tremendous job there. So, those were my prepared remarks, and happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, if not, then I thank you very much, and I'd like to recognize Ms. Hummel.
Can you bring, please, Paul? Sorry.
Okay. Recognize Ms. Hummel and Ms. Peterson and the staff for all that you do. You answer our questions, you provide us with information, and I, I know how diligent you ladies are along with your staff, so thank you very, very much.
All right, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, any other discussion or questions?
Before we get to the, the action item, I just want to thank the, the firm and our district for providing us with the information last week. It was interesting reading material, as always, and good educational information for the board to have. Thank you very much.
Okay, then we're ready for a roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
Roll call? Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The motion carries. All right, then that takes us to our operating fund balance for the period ending June 30th, 2024. Dr. Small?
The information in the ACFER allows us to also bring you a standalone report detailing our fund balances as of June 30, 2024. The fund balance levels are maintained to ensure adequate levels of consistent operational and financial planning purposes, including avoiding short-term and long-term borrowing.
Then that takes us to the 2023-2024 Popular Annual Financial Report of the Board of Education. Again, it's an informational item. Dr. Small?
While the ACFER includes the information required with a complete audit, we have again prepared a PAFR, which is the Popular Annual Financial Report, to facilitate informed understanding in a different format. The auditors presented high praise of the quality work conducted by the members of our business team, and I want to also express our thanks to Lauren Hummel, Barb Peterson, Sandy Ims, Kathy Zlousky, who are part of the team that helps develop the ACFER, as well as Erin Holmes and her department, which helps put it into a more user-friendly form of the PAFR.
Okay, thank you very much. That takes us to information about student-user fees introduction. Dr. Small?
As stated, this is only an introduction to the structure for District 211 for 2025-2026 school year fees. There's no action tonight, only information in preparation for January's meeting, where the board will then take action on the fees for the upcoming school year. As a reminder, prior to COVID, the enrollment fee was $170 per student. During COVID, the fee was waived for four years, and the board set the fee last year at $75 per student, last year for this year, excuse me, it is this year's fee.
Okay, thank you. All right, that takes us to an action item. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the Intergovernmental Agreement between the District 211 Board of Education and the Community Unit District 220 Board of Education for participation in a course exchange reciprocity?
Reciprocity.
Reciprocity program. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Small?
District 211 has been partnering with Barrington District 220 since prior to 2010 to engage in this course exchange reciprocity program. Through the program, students enrolled in District 211 are permitted to enroll in certain courses offered by District 220, and students enrolled in 220 are permitted to enroll in specific courses of study offered by District 211. The Intergovernment Agreement, which is before you tonight, provides legal standing and protections for both districts and allows the program to continue by mutual agreement.
Okay, any questions in regards to that?
Clarifying note, it says in the agreement that each district is responsible for the transportation of its serving district students. Yes?
Correct.
Right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, if not, roll call, please?
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The motion carries. All right, that takes us to our next recommended action, and that is that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding between the Village of Arlington Heights, the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 15, the Board of Education of Township High School District 211, the Board of Education of Township High School District 214, and CBFC Development LLC. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Small?
Tonight's vote on the memorandum of understanding is culmination of months of thoughtful negotiation and collaboration between High School District 211, Community Consolidated, excuse me, Community Consolidated School District 15, Township High School District 214, the Village of Arlington Heights, and the Chicago Bears Football Club. The document we are considering tonight reflects our commitment to ensuring the redevelopment of the Arlington Park site is managed to prioritize the long-term interest of our students, schools, and communities. Is results of months of careful negotiation and collaboration among the three school Is results of months of careful negotiation and collaboration among the three school districts, the Village of Arlington Heights and the Chicago Bears Football Club. Each organization, whether it be the school district, the Bears, or the Village of Arlington Heights, brought their key concerns of the MOU to the table. The school districts consistently sent a common message that this can be found within the MOU that's presented to you tonight. That message consisted from the school districts, included full financial support for any new students that may come from the residential development on the property, true voting power for any TIF decisions or pilot-like agreements, and a tax agreement that is in line with the most recent Cook County Assessor's Office assessment, which rises between 2% and 5% if there is no completion of stadium, stadium-building milestones in the next three years. While the Chicago Bears have not yet committed to Arlington Heights, this agreement reflects our readiness and optimism. It provides a roadmap that balances the opportunities presented between this redevelopment with the protections needed to safeguard our schools and communities. I want to thank my colleagues in District 15 and 214, the Village of Arlington Heights and the Chicago Bears, for their collaboration and dedication throughout this process. Now to provide you more details on the MOU and the negotiations process, I'd like to introduce forensic attorney Scott Metcalf and Cozen lobbyist Matt Glavine, who've been integral partners with the three school districts as we navigated these complex negotiations. They will provide a more detailed summary, provide insights, and address any questions that we might have.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Scott Metcalf. I'm a partner at Transyc PC, and I have been working on the former Arlington Park Racecourse property for just over two years now. And tonight, what I would like to do is go through a timeline of events that have led us up to this point, look at the key terms and provisions of the Memorandum of Understanding, which I'll probably be referring to later on as the MOU. Then we're going to look at moving forward. What does this mean? How will the, how do we anticipate that this MOU will impact the district and, and the, the future of the property? And then Matt will be giving a legislative update. And finally, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the board members have. This first slide in the presentation is an aerial photograph of the old Arlington Park Racecourse as it existed until 2023, when demolition of the Racecourse property started. You'll see at the top of the property, there was a training track and horse stables in the top triangle portion along Highway 53. Then as you proceed down, directly below that, there were a number of dormitories for the seasonal staff. And in the lower right-hand corner of the property is the, the portion that we're all most familiar with, which is the racetrack and grandstand and the parking at Euclid and Wilkie Roads. This is an aerial view of what the Chicago Bears Football Club proposed to develop the property into once it was purpose, purchased. The, the upper left-hand corner is the Stadium District where the domed stadium that we're all familiar with and has been talked about a lot would be built. That particular portion that's labeled the Stadium District by my calculations is a little bit over 120 acres. The portion of the property in the lower right-hand corner that's labeled Mixed Use District is, it would be a combination of commercial venues and residential venues, which include townhomes, condominiums, and apartments. That particular portion of the property is 200 acres. So the lion's share of this property would be developed into property that could potentially house students and impact the, all of the districts. And that is really what, what was the motivating force behind this, this Memorandum of Understanding, because beyond the stadium, there is a huge amount of residential development possibility for this property. The timeline of events started in the fall of 2021, when the Arlington Park site went under contract for purchase to, by the Chicago Bears. In April and July of 2022, Superintendent Lori Hines of District 15 sent two letters to the Village of Arlington Heights, expressing her concern about the potential residential development on the property. In September of 2022, the Bears made their presentation at Hershey High School, in which we first got their first, we got our, their, our first impression of what they intended to do with the property, which at this point is still conceptual drawings, which we just saw in the previous slide. And then in February of 2023, the Bears purchased the property and that, that sale closed at a purchase price of $197 million. And in April of 18th of 2023, the, the Chicago Bears, Village of Arlington Heights, and representatives of Districts 15, 211, and 214 met at District 15. I remember that day well because I believe it was Kevin Warren's first day on the job. And so we were, we were greeting him at the door, so to speak. It was then not until August 3rd of 2023 that the Village of Arlington Heights circulated the first draft version of this MOU that you're being presented with tonight. And we've been working on it almost continuously since August of 2023. In November of 2023, the districts met with the Village, Village of Arlington Heights officials to discuss what we would like to see changed in the Memorandum of Understanding and how this would play into a number of other things that were going on at the time. In January of 2024, the superintendents had the honor of meeting with Kevin Warren and upper-level executives of the Chicago Bears at Halas Hall. We met again with them at the end of January at the District 214 offices. And then there was a subsequent meeting on October 7th of 2024, where we came to an agreement on, on the, this, a near-final draft of the Memorandum of Understanding that's before you tonight. Now, the Memorandum of Understanding is a 13-page document that starts out with some contractual language at the beginning. Section 1 is the recitals, and the recitals basically just tell you what the position of the parties are, who they are, and what their expectations are going into the agreement. Section 2 of the Memorandum of Understanding is just a statement of cooperation, basically expressing the intent of the parties to cooperate in good faith as they go through the process of implementing this agreement. Section 3 is the purpose and impact of the Memorandum of Understanding. The key point here is that if the stadium is not developed in the Village of Arlington Heights, then the Memorandum of Understanding becomes null and void. The key, the, the key provision, really, for the school districts begins with Section 4, which is residential development. The Memorandum of, the Memorandum of Understanding, which I promise I'll try to start referring to as the MOU for the sake of time, you know, includes a, a formula for addressing the full per pupil cost of new students that are, that come from the development. That formula takes the operating expenses per pupil of the district for the preceding year, multiplies it by the number of students that are living within the residential developments on the property, and then subtracts out project-related revenues from the property itself. So that would be the property taxes that are already being paid by the residents, plus any additional monies that are coming from the Village of Arlington Heights or the Chicago Bears to compensate the district. And once you subtract the money the school districts are already getting from the, from the operating expenses per pupil times the number of new students, then you get the amount of the operating costs that either the Village or the Chicago Bears would have to contribute to the school districts in order to make them whole. Now, the second component of Section 4 is a special provision dealing with the capital costs, because, because of the size of this development and the fact that it is as yet undefined, there is a reasonable possibility that it could generate enough students that especially District 214 and District 15 would have to build additional classroom space to accommodate all of those students. And so what Section 4 also addresses is these capital costs. And it binds the parties to negotiate in good faith to find a source of money to address those capital costs. Then we get into the financing mechanisms for the redevelopment of the property itself. Section 5A addresses tax increment financing. It provides that TIF will not be used in a portion where the stadium is located and a pilot program is in place. And pilot stands for payments in lieu of taxes, which was a legislative proposal that was introduced by the Chicago Bears. And we'll discuss that a little bit more in detail in a second. But basically, this prohibits the use of TIF and pilot on the same property at the same time. For any TIF district where a stadium is located, the school districts are giving, given additional powers with the Joint Review Board, which is a grouping of taxing, taxing agencies that are going to be impacted by a TIF district. And the Joint Review Board in this case would have to, would have the power to essentially veto the TIF district for the stadium portion of the property. They are given voting powers in proportion to their share of the property tax bill. And since the school districts generally take up, and actually in this case do take up, 60% of the property tax bill, they would have 60% of the vote and therefore would have the majority vote on whether or not to implement a TIF over the stadium. For any TIF that does not include a stadium, the Joint Review Board would have additional powers over and above what is in the TIF Act. The Joint Review Board is normally only making recommendations, which can be completely ignored by the Village. They would just have, the, if, in a normal situation with a TIF district, if the Joint Review Board votes against the creation of the TIF district, there would only be a supermajority required by the Village Board trustees in order to adopt the TIF district. In this case, under this Memorandum of Understanding, there would be no TIF district unless a majority of the members of the Joint Review Board voted in favor of the TIF district for any portion of the property that does not include a stadium. Section 5B deals with payment in lieu of taxes, which I mentioned a little bit earlier. This is a legislative proposal and is not law at the current moment. But payments in lieu of taxes, the concept is basically that the assessment of the property or a portion of the property would be frozen for a period of 23 to 40 years. So there would be no growth in the assessed value of the property as the stadium was being built and occupied. However, there would be an agreement in place before that happened, which would guarantee that the taxing districts would receive a, an additional payment outside of the property tax bill to accommodate for that growth in value and that growth in revenue that's resulting from the development of the property. So you would have not only the tax bill, but this payment in lieu of taxes on top of that, that would seek to compensate for the frozen nature of the assessment. So the, the agreement provides that the parties will cooperate to promote, to promote this legislation. But it will, more importantly, the pilot would, the pilot agreement would have to contain some specific provisions. The first provision is the identification of the base year, which is very important, as well as the base year assessment. So we will have, as the school district representatives, a seat at the table to decide what that assessed value will be frozen at for the next 23 to 40 years. We would also have a seat at the table when determining what the annual payment to the taxing agencies will be, and an agreement on the capital needs of all three of the school districts. Now, most importantly, this pilot agreement would also be subject to the same joint review, review board approval process, with the school districts having a majority of the vote and the ability to reject any pilot agreement that they don't agree with, because they would have 60% of the vote, as I was discussing a little bit earlier. Finally, in Section 7, the, the Memorandum of Understanding addresses the property tax assessment until construction on the stadium begins. So at, by way of a little bit of historical perspective, when the racetrack was in operation, it was assessed at approximately, a market value of approximately $33 million per year. In 2022, when the news of the sale of the property became public, the assessor increased that quite substantially, but we agreed with Churchill Downs at the time to settle at a 90, a market value of $95 million per year. In 2023, no agreement was reached with the Chicago Bears on what the assessment of the property should be, but the Board of Review issued a decision finding that the market value of the property was approximately $125 million. They have appealed that to the Property Tax Appeal Board, and that appeal will not be addressed in this Memorandum of Understanding. The parties will simply let the process play out at the Property Tax Appeal Board. The agreement then provides for what the assessment should be in 2024 and 2025 through 2027. For 2024, the parties agree that the property should be assessed at a market value of $125 million and the 10% assessment level, because the, the structures have now been demolished. For 2025 through 2027, that assessed value, that market value will remain the same as well as the vacant land, as well as the vacant land classification. Now, if the zoning approval is sought by the Chicago Bears for the tax, for tax years 2028 through 2030, then that, that $125 million value for the property will remain in place. If they do not seek that, then the assessed value of the property will increase by no less than 2%, no more than 5% per year. So there's a, an economic incentive for them to go ahead and achieve the completion of the application for the land entitlements that would, that would entitle them to develop the property. For, for tax years 20, beyond 2030, if they have not sought the building permits, then it would increase again. But, but otherwise, if they are seeking building permits, then they, they will have, maintain that market value of $125 million for their assessment. Section 8 of the Memorandum of Understanding.
Before you move on, can you briefly explain where the 10% and the 25% come from?
Yes, that comes from the Cook County Real Property Classification Ordinance, which classifies homes, which we're all familiar with, at 10% of their fair market value for taxation purposes. So your assessment, when you get it in the mail, will show you a fair market value, and then if you multiply that by 10%, that's your assessment. And your assessment, plus the equalization, multiplied by the equalization factor times the tax rate, determines your tax bill. For commercial and industrial properties, commercial property like the racetrack, it's assessed at 25% of its fair market value. And vacant land, which is, you know, has no improvements on it, is assessed at 10%, just like your, like, like your homes are.
Thank you.
Last two sections of the agreement. Section 8 is a statement on cooperation on public statements and the media. And then Section 9 is just general provisions. And one thing to note in there is that this Memorandum of Understanding is binding on the Chicago Bears Football Club, as well as anyone that they sell, you know, the property to that would want to develop it in the same manner with a stadium. So if the team is sold for any reason, there's a provision in Section 9 that continues this Memorandum of Understanding. So I'll turn it over to Matt now to talk a little bit about the, the legislation.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm going to keep my remarks pretty high-level, do a quick overview of what's been happening in Springfield, and then obviously, happy to take any questions you might have. The General Assembly is getting close to wrapping up its two-year session. They will return to Springfield on January 2nd and run a lame duck session until January 7th. At midnight on January 8th, the session is concluded, and all legislation has, will expire. So any bill that was introduced in the last two years that did not become law by midnight on January 7th goes away. The new session starts at noon on January 8th, when the new General Assembly is inaugurated, and bills can be reintroduced at that time. The session is currently scheduled to run through May 31st of 2025. Cozen, as I mentioned, the legislation will expire on January 8th, and members are free to, to reintroduce their bills. Myself and my partner John Dunn have been meeting with leaders in the General Assembly, including the Senate President, Speaker of the House, the minority leaders of both chambers, as well as other influential stakeholders in the process, including the local representatives from the community. We've also been working very closely with the lobbyists for the Village Arlington Heights and the Chicago Bears. I'm sure you're all aware of the public comments that the governor, the speaker, and Senate President have been making about the willingness to provide public funds for a private stadium. I think it's safe to say that they're cool to the idea. As recently as earlier this week, they've reiterated that, that point. In the last few months, the state has adjusted its budget projections and is talking about a potential $3 billion deficit for next year. This obviously makes. This obviously makes the availability of public funds that much harder, but we will continue to work with the legislature to ensure that any proposal makes sure that the schools are protected. Happy to take any questions. I know Scott's probably got more questions for him, but I'm happy to answer any as well.
Any questions? Ms. Cavill?
Tim, if you're ready, I can go first. Hold on just a second.
I just had a, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate your, it's been a long couple of years, so I appreciate you laying everything out nice and neat for me. Thank you.
Okay. My question was, there's language in there about the imposition of a market-oriented capital, like market-oriented capital costs in terms of the residential development, and that was part of, I'll just call it the story, of trying to making, trying to make the school districts whole. But it's not clear to me from that language who's paying that cost and who is that cost being imposed on? Because when it's speaking specifically to the residential development, does that mean units sold in that residential development will have an extra cost that will then be directed to the school? Who's paying that?
It, yeah, it could be the residents. If the developer of those residential units decides to pass those costs on to the homeowners who are living there, the village would, could impose impact fees on the developers themselves and ask the developers to pay them. But what the developer does after that, in terms of passing those costs along...
Making themselves whole.
Yes. There's a limit to the power of government to control, you know, the economic activity of developers.
Yes, okay, thank you. And then, so when we're talking about this joint review board and the weighted voting, we're talking about each vote at a school board meeting? Or are you talking about some members of the school board at the time being part of a joint review board that then votes, and those votes are weighted?
The Joint Review Board typically has one representative from each taxing agency. And so if Lisa, for example, was a member of the Joint Review Board, she, her voting power would be in proportion to District 211's portion of the tax bill. So, you know, let's say that 211 has 36% of the tax bill, Lisa would have 36% of the voting power.
Okay. Thank you. Those were my clarifying questions. Thank you very much for the presentation. It was very clear, and I appreciate it.
Sure.
Mr. Dombrowski, any questions?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Ms. Barron?
No questions, just thank you so much for being here tonight, and I also want to thank our administration, especially Dr. Small, for continuing to keep us updated on a weekly basis, almost, and really being open to the communications with everyone. So thank you so much for all the hard work that you've put in, and you too as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenblum, questions?
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for representing us locally and downstate. The one question that I have is, I believe you said that if the Bears decide not to build a stadium in Arlington Heights, then the MOU is absolved, is that correct?
That's correct. Then we would start from scratch.
That was my question. What, what next? Do we start this whole ball rolling again in all the different ways that it's already been done with the taxing bodies and the Bears and maybe legislators all trying to hash things out? A new development plan of what the property may look like or what the Bears may do with it? I mean, is it all, anything, right? I'm not a big fan of what ifs, but this sounds like a big what if.
Right, well, I mean, the key factor here is the stadium because the stadium is not, is so large and such a huge development of the property that they are seeking tax breaks. They're seeking pilots or TIFs or some sort of economic incentive to help them out. If the Bears decided to redevelop it as all residential property, or if they sold the property to someone who wanted to turn it into housing units or a data center, then this memorandum of understanding would not apply. It contemplates a stadium being built and huge tax incentives being given to the Bears. So I think it's only appropriate that if something else happens to the property, then we start over again and deal with it. But all those other situations that I just mentioned, developing it as residential or a data center or distribution facility, all of those things have their, would not necessitate such huge tax breaks for the developer.
Okay, and I also want to thank the, all the parties involved, the school districts, the village, the Bears, for continuing the dialogue and the willingness to have dialogue because I know that that isn't always necessary in the case. So very appreciative to all of that as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you for a clear presentation and having the timeline and explaining it to everyone. I think it's very important because piecemeal information has come out and in light, you know, schools have been looked at negatively, and we are just preparing, we're looking to make certain that the schools are, you know, fully covered and that our students are taken care of, and I thank you for the excellent presentation here.
If I can add one more component in the, what the Bears have currently presented, if they move forward with it, the stadium portion is in the District 211 area, and the residential multi-use portion is the District 15, 214 area. Actually, District 15 covers the entire area. But the MOU is set up to protect any one of the three school districts should they change their mind in terms of the approach of how they're designing this, but has to include a stadium development.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, if not, then may I have a roll call, please?
Madam, will you open for discussion or just questions?
Well, discussion, of course.
Okay, thank you. I had no additional questions, but I did have some comments. You know, for me, the actions of this board may be inconsistent. When we have an assessment that is determined by the county and is challenged by an established business within our district, we hire attorneys to fight the appeals at the Property Tax Appeal Board. Now we're being asked to agree to an incentivizing deal with a commercial entity that has no roots in the community and yet to provide a livelihood for its residents and is sitting on unapproved land as a tool of leverage. If this MOU is approved tonight, I ask this board to consider my words and provide some future consideration to those property owners within our district that have established themselves with decades of equity. These residential, commercial, and industrial properties are seeking a fair property value to maintain viability as residents in our community. I want to vote, I want my vote to clearly show that D-211 is a good partner for municipal agencies that overlap with the district boundaries. Development is important, not only for the government institutions, but also for the quality of life it provides the residents. The alternatives is food deserts, blighted property, and lower or negative equity growth for property owners. But finally, I hope this action brings about an end to our need to pay lobbyists. If this property is developed into a stadium or some other use, this board needs to return to, the focus back to investing in the business of education and return those dollars to our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions or discussion?
I agree.
Ms. Cavill?
I agree with the State House, and that's no public money for a private business. And I said that from the outside. This agreement, I think, represents a good amount of work that I really appreciate, and I think it's the best of what overall I consider a bad deal. I'm on board until we get to the pilot. I'm not willing to lobby with the Bears for anything, and I'm not willing to financially commit this district to something 23 to 40 years into the future. That, to me, doesn't represent a good financial decision. So, you know, I've been clear about that from the beginning. That's how I feel, but notwithstanding, I think what you manage to achieve is actually pretty incredible. It's just not something I can vote for.
I think over the years, the board, this board and prior boards have been very much against TIFs lasting for such a long period of time. And I know we had some senators that tried to make some changes to it, and hopefully that will go forward. And hopefully that'll address the issues of current developments and, you know, put us in better positions. So I thank you. All right. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? All right. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
No.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz? Aye. The motion carries. That takes us to the next recommended action, and that is that the Board of Education award the Business for Buses for Transportation Department to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Central State's bus sale in the amount of $1,342,770. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Small?
The recommendation before the board is to purchase gasoline and propane-fueled buses. Our transportation department continues to review the efficiency and practicality of electric buses annually. At this point, we continue to find alternatives to diesel of gasoline and propane to be the most effective option for transportation requirements within our district.
Any comments, thoughts, questions, discussion?
Dr. Small, just very briefly, and Madam President, I know that District 15 recently got some electric buses, and that's fantastic for them, but we've had a previous discussion, I want to say about a year ago, I believe, about this, maybe a year and a half, because I remember it being in the summer. But regardless, we had a discussion about whether or not this district could do something similar, and one of the things that was discussed at that time, like in comparison to District 15, is the size of our district and exactly how many square miles that our buses need to cover, and then the very, you know, the impact that has on the reliability and the other associated costs. So I appreciate the continued review, but we've had previous discussions about this issue too, for any community members who are looking for more detail.
Thank you. Anything else?
Is our entire, our entire fleet propane, right? No? Okay. So there are two gasoline.
Yeah, we currently have 25 gasoline buses in our fleet. I think we're at about somewhere between 70 and 80, and the propane and the remainder are still diesel, so this will replace all diesel buses.
All right. Any other questions?
I appreciate the continued influence and influx of propane-powered buses and the benefits that those have to our school district, the community, and the environment and things like that. I remember when we first looked at that and first started to bring them in, and it's pretty impressive, the transition that we've been going through to gradually switch over to more efficient and effective resources. So thank you for that.
All right. If there's no other comments or questions or discussion, then may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz? Aye. The motion carries. The next recommended action is that the Board of Education authorize the district to complete an application for the School Maintenance Program grant for the replacement of fire display panels, and further that funds be allocated in the 2024, 2025, and 2025, 2026 operations and maintenance budgets for completion of this project. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Dr. Small?
This is a matching grant from the ISBE for up to $50,000.
All right. I know you provided us information. Any questions, comments, discussion? Okay, none? Then may I have a roll call, please? Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz? Aye. The motion carries. Next recommended action is that the Board of Education schedule regular board meetings in the G.A. McElroy Administration Center to begin at 6:30 p.m. for the purpose of entering closed session, with the public portion of the business meetings beginning at 7:30 p.m. for Thursday, July 17th, 2025, Thursday, August 14th, 2025, Thursday, September 18th, 2025, Thursday, October 16th, 2025, Thursday, November 6th, 2025, Thursday, December 11th, 2025, Thursday, January 22nd, 2026, Thursday, February 19th, 2026, Thursday, March 19th, 2026, Thursday, April 16th, 2026, Thursday, May 14th, 2026, and Thursday, June 18th, 2026. Further, that the Board Secretary be directed to post proper notice. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Dr. Small?
Each year, the Board of Education sets the dates for the upcoming fiscal year. At the high school level, the major events and building usage calendar development begins in February for the upcoming year. By approving these dates early, the Board of Education can then help the school districts manage those programs, events, and calendar dates to go outside of the board meetings as best as possible.
Okay. Any comments, thoughts, questions? Okay, roll call, please? Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz? Aye. The motion carries. Next recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for future expense reimbursement for Stephen Rosenblum to attend the Ed Redd Annual Legislative Dinner Meeting on January 27th, 2025, as submitted. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please? Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mrs. Klinkowitz? Aye. The motion carries. That takes us to potential topics for future discussion. I do have two that have been, that I was informed about. The first, I'm going to start with Mr. Rosenblum, and it's in regards to IASB, their Vision 2030. Mr. Rosenblum?
Thank you. The Joint Annual Conference held in Chicago last month was a fantastic professional development opportunity for District 211 administrators and board members who attended, including me, Mrs. Klinkowitz, Mr. Harlan, and Ms. Hummel. We were able to attend sessions on several topics, and will be working in the weeks and months ahead to bring insights and ideas back to 211 for the benefit of our students, educators, and families. For me, a particular highlight was the introduction of the Vision 2030 Blueprint for Excellence in Public K-12 Education. At the Joint Annual Conference, education leaders from five statewide organizations introduced the Vision 2030 Blueprint for Excellence in K-12 Public Education. Vision 2030 was developed through an engagement effort that included input from more than 1,000 stakeholders, including locally-elected school boards statewide, from the southern tip to northern Illinois. It also reflects input from discussions with local educators who work tirelessly inside and outside of school buildings to improve outcomes for children from all backgrounds across Illinois. Development of the Vision 2030 Blueprint was led by the Illinois Association of School Administrators, Illinois Association of School Boards, Illinois Principals Association, Illinois Association of School Business Officials, and Illinois Association of Regional Superintendents. Vision 2030 is rooted in a shared belief that students learn best and educators teach most effectively when they feel safe and connected to one another and their communities. This is the single most important thing we can do to support both academic achievement and individual well-being, and it is something that has to be considered in our instructional approach, curriculum, student support services, and finances, so that local districts have the resources needed to ensure that our school buildings are safe. Vision 2030 provides a roadmap to enhance K-12 public education through future-focused learning, shared accountability, and predictable funding. It articulates a shared commitment to putting systems and processes in place that support all school districts throughout the state in sharing what works for our kids and our communities, and it details plans to advance policy, legislative, and fiscal solutions, leveraging public resources and preserve local flexibility and leadership so that the important decisions about curriculum and finances are made closest to home. I would like to propose that this school district discuss, the school district board discuss and possibly agree to a resolution to support... to support Vision 2030 Blueprint at the state level. And so I'd like that to be considered for an item for future discussion. And I can certainly forward additional information, if it is so chosen, to be an item for future discussion at our January meeting, to this board through our President and Dr. Small, so that we can have a thorough, educated discussion, if needed, in hopefully voting to support this resolution at the state level. And we can, if it is so chosen, there is time for us to agree to support it at the state level at our next board meeting in time for it to be considered at the legislation.
Okay. If I may just add, I know IASB has sent out information, and that could go to all of our board members for the discussion then in January. It talks, it has talking points in regards to it, and more specific information of what they're proposing. And would I have consensus from the board to present this and discuss it at our January meeting? Mr. McGowan?
Absolutely.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Is this blueprint finalized, or is it still in development?
My understanding is that it's finalized, and they're asking all of the school districts to agree to a resolution supporting it. But we need to be able to have that information and be able to talk about it.
So this is a standard resolution that the IASB is bringing forth, like they typically do at their conferences? This is something outside of that?
Correct. That's the way I meant, yes.
That's fine. I can listen to information.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Barron? Okay. All right. Then, I know we had sent the information to Dr. Small. Would you be able to distribute it, to get it to all the board members, please? And then we'll take a look at it and have a discussion in regards to it. I don't want to do a whole hour presentation on it.
No, I agree. And I guess the best would be to have a motion at the January meeting to agree to have this board support the resolution, and then it'll be open for any discussion, and then we can have a vote as a board as to whether or not to
Yes or no.
to endorse it as a school district.
Okay. And I know that the different organizations, the Illinois Association of the Superintendents, is looking at it all. So I don't know if, Dr. Small, if you have any feedback from the associations yet, because maybe you haven't had an opportunity to meet and discuss it.
Correct.
So that would be valuable information to what the insight is with the other associations. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions there? All right. Thank you. The other item that was presented for discussion is from Mr. Dombrowski. Mr. Dombrowski, would you like to present that and see if the board is interested in having some discussion on it?
Yes, I'd like to move that the board add to the January meeting a discussion on a board policy for high school credit earned through courses taught by a high school-endorsed teacher at the junior high level. Over the last decade, I have heard about the challenges parents and students face getting from their junior high school to the high school buildings for these classes. I believe there is an opportunity to improve the academic experience for these students. It is important, similar to the memo of understanding that was presented tonight, that a clear policy is in place for our partner districts and parents to understand what would be expected. A commitment from D-211 through a proactive written and posted policy would incentivize junior high schools to prioritize the students with minimum disruption. There's no reason why we would wait to establish a policy.
All right. Can you read the first sentence of that again, please?
The motion for?
Yeah, like the very beginning, because I want to-
A board policy for high school credit earned through courses taught by a high school-endorsed teacher at the junior high level.
Okay. So you mean at the feeder districts, on that, at that location?
In the building where the students reside, whether they're hired by 211 or whether they're hired by 15 or 54.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
As long as they have the credentials to teach.
Okay. Before I ask for consensus from the board if we want to present that, I'd like to get some input from Dr. Small, and then I also have a comment.
We can certainly present a policy. I would prefer to send it in February. Our policies are always read by our attorneys, and that gives us time to do our due diligence on our side, as well as on the attorney's side. It does not slow down the process for next year in any way, shape, or form.
That's assuming that the board would agree to, and then
Yeah, correct.
a discussion. So I'm just asking for a dis-
You don't want the policy ready for January?
No, just a discussion, and then if the board agrees after the discussion to provide direction to the administration, then that would be, does that make sense?
Fair enough.
Okay.
All right. But one of the questions I will ask next week, or next month, for your consideration is whether the board is still open for school districts that want us to teach it, or whether we want to force. The only way that it happens is if it happens at the junior high level. That will have to be clarified.
That'll be part of the discussion, yes?
Correct.
All right.
I guess what I'm also wondering about is what legislation is coming down in regards to some of the language credits and things of that nature. We've got some new board members that are going to be elected in the very near future. I'm wondering if maybe this discussion needs to be a little bit later on in the year. I'd like some more input from Dr. Small.
I think that it can happen. My only concern is creating the policy. And we can do that in two reads, in February and March, as needed, and still meet the timeline of what we need, should the board decide to offer that.
Okay. And you can provide us with some information as to maybe what some of the legislation is, what's required, what we're doing, how it affects our staff, what the feeder districts are doing, what their expectation is. Can you have discussion with all of these people to be able to give us information?
Sure.
Okay. So let me just clarify. So we're looking for a discussion in January, or are we looking for a discussion in February?
I don't like February, March.
I think that it'd be good to have the discussion in January, and then if the board is in agreement that we'd like to proceed with the policy, then it becomes an action item after that. If, after the January discussion, the board decides that it doesn't go any further, there's no point in engaging the attorneys, developing the policy. And, you know, this is mostly in response to what I've heard, whether it's been students trying to make classes at Palatine, or the eighth-grade student that we had speak to us publicly this evening. It's just to open up the door through policy for more options than maybe the standard practice.
Okay. I just want to clarify, and I want to make sure that we have enough time for administration to talk to our other districts also. All right. And, Dr. Small, that would work?
Sure.
Okay. So we'll-
We talk to them all the time.
All right. Let me-
I'm sorry.
Is there consensus, then, to have this?
Madam President, I just want to clarify. Are we talking about this particular course, or just classes in general, that, okay, thank you?
All right. So classes in general, and you can provide us with which ones that we do currently with the feeder schools. Okay. All right. Is there consensus?
If I just may, I just want to, if the student or her parents are still watching, thank you so much for coming before the board, especially to the student who was very brave in speaking to the board today, and kind of, and also letting us know from their perspective, the challenges and hearing from them. I love hearing from the students. I'm up for the discussion. I think definitely we need to have it. As we heard, it's creating very difficult challenges for the students. I would also ask, and I know, Dr. Small, you may already be in conversations, but continuing to have some conversations as to what we can currently do for those students in those classes to meet some of those challenges that they're seeing. So if the board is okay with that, I would like to see some, hopefully, solutions to meeting the students and helping the students out this year, instead of waiting for a policy, and then the whole group of students are struggling currently.
I think we had some feedback as to what is being offered.
I can send out information to the board. Absolutely.
Because you've, Dr. Small has given us the information of what they've been trying to offer, what they're looking to do. So maybe, you know, send that out again, so we have that. That would be good. But as far as our discussion of keeping that, kind of a general discussion about
Policy at issue.
The classes, the policy at issue.
Yeah.
Let's do that, then. All right. Anything else?
I'm all for whatever we can do to better collaborate and partner with our, with our, I don't, I hate calling them feeder districts.
Our foundational districts.
Okay. Center districts, is that what we're calling them? Is that a better, okay. So I'm all about collaborating and partnering with our center districts, because they're our students, right? Whether they're here or coming here, they're our students, and we need to do whatever we can to help them be successful throughout their educational experiences. And if partnering, collaborating both ways with those districts is something we can do.
And I think, and I'll add to that, because I think it's very exciting, because, you know, these are gifted students who are able to do that. I am just in awe of them, of being able to do that at the eighth-grade level. So having something for our gifted students is truly important. All right. Anything else there?
Well, we got one more. During public comments, another point was brought up about, in regards to board member attendance. I just feel like we should probably at least have a conversation and/or vote, if that's something we want to add to future discussion.
We do have our board policies that will be coming up, that we're going to be talking about.
Our protocols?
Yeah.
Our board protocols, is that what you're referring to?
Board protocols and, you know, different board policies. So that would be something that really should be taken a look at.
Okay. Well, furthermore, we'd just like to add that for community members that don't know, we are here at this board once a month. But for a lot of board members, we're in these schools very often. I'm in Palatine, I'm in Frem, I'm in Schaumburg, I'm in Hoffman, that's a lot of, a lot of my colleagues here, because I run into them there. So I just, I wanted to kind of clean up this idea that our obligation is to this desk once a month. It's actually a lot more than that, a lot of things going behind the scenes. So just wanted to clean that up for everybody here.
And thank you for clarifying that, because the board members do attend various functions at the school, and there are different meetings and committee meetings. So I thank you for clarifying that, Mr. McGowan.
No problem, Madam President.
All right. Then we're going to move on to our committee reports. NSEO, I was not able to attend. Mr. Rosenbloom was able to be there in my place. Please.
Thank you, Mrs. Klimkowitz. So, Mr. McGowan, speaking of things that we do outside of the boardroom, so I attended, I represented our school district and our board at the December 4th NSEO board meeting. It was my second time ever observing a board meeting for NSEO. And it was, it was really a wonderful experience. We always hear about it from Mrs. Klimkowitz, and the opportunity to hear from students, and the educators that they have, and the programs that they have. And it was a great experience for me. We heard from a couple of students. They have a Rising Star program, and they highlight a couple of students every month. And we got to hear from those students and see them in person for the great work that they've been doing, going through the NSEO programs. We also heard from the principal and assistant principal from Timber Ridge School, who provided us updates on some of the goals that they have, which included student outcomes, and supportive collaborative, and person-centered learning environments. So they went through a presentation with us on some of the ways that they've been successfully implementing those goals in their schools. So that was really a great experience. And like any board meeting, there were things to vote on, and listen to, and get educated about. And it was really a special opportunity to represent our district, and I appreciate that.
Thank you for being there. All right. That takes us to EdRed and Mr. Rosenbloom.
All right. So for EdRed, they had a joint EdRed and NWSSSBO, which is Business Officers Meeting. And I know there were a couple other people from our school district that were also in attendance, because I saw them online. And it was really a great, a great program where they had partners from a law, from a couple firms, Chapman and Cutler, Kyle Harding, and Anjali Vajh, discussed and reviewed school finance legislation, PA 103-591. And that was very educational and good information. Also, there's, and thank you to the board for approving my expenses to attend the Annual Legislative Dinner, coming up on January 27th, with the topic of securing the future of public education, navigating federal uncertainty in 2025. So it should be a very interesting and timely topic, and I hope to bring some great information back to everybody from that meeting.
Thank you. Next is the Community and Family Services Report. Ms. Barron?
Thank you. The UP Coalition's next meeting is on January 29th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Palatine Library District. So that's all.
Thank you. All right. That takes us to the Illinois Association of School Board Reports. Mr. Rosenbloom?
Thank you. So as I mentioned, last month was the Joint Annual Conference in Chicago. It was very educational and a great opportunity, as always, to learn what's going on across our state that impacts our district. The Annual Delegate Assembly was held on Saturday of that weekend in conjunction with the conference. The resolutions adopted during the Delegate Assembly established the advocacy priorities and legislative director, direction of the association. This school board, many members gave me feedback as to which resolutions they were in favor of, or not in favor of. And our very own Mrs. Klimkowitz is the Resolutions Chair for our division of IASB, and she sits on a committee that reviews resolutions submitted by school districts and decides which ones will go forward and be presented to that delegate. Six resolutions and one constitutional amendment were adopted. We also voted to not reconsider three appealed proposals. During the assembly, members elected President Mark Harms from Flanagan-Cornell USD 74, and Vice President Tracy Sayer from Tropia Consolidated School District 27 to their second terms in office. Other information about the Delegate Assembly can be found on the IASB website.
Okay. Thank you very much. That takes us to Parent Connections and Communication Report. Ms. Barron?
Unfortunately, I was not able to attend last week's meeting, so I will turn it over to Mr. Tenepur.
Okay. So at our meeting, we reviewed the Student Success Guide, which is an expansion of what was formerly the Incoming Freshmen Guide, and this is a year-by-year guide that provides information and resources for parents and students to access for whichever grade in school their child might be. And the committee of, of which there were eight members who were there in attendance, provided some very helpful information, including things that, as we guessed from the parent perspective, what could happen, they were able to provide us that information. And our next meeting is February 11th.
Thank you so much to Mr. Tenepur and Ms. Holmes for leading that committee and leading the discussion. And I'm excited to attend the next meeting. I think it's going to be really exciting.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. That takes us to our upcoming events and calendar items. And, well, within, what, a week, week and a half, we'll be starting our week, our spring, our winter break. Okay. A lot going on. And then our next regularly-scheduled meeting is going to be January 23rd. Okay. That takes us to our next recommended action, that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific- or dismissal of specific employees. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I know that we've completed most of our discussion, so is there any discussion? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barron?
No.
Ms. Cavell?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No. That, I'm glad we were able to complete all of our closed-session items. All right, then that takes us to a couple of items here. The recommended action is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Renee Aradia effective June 2028, consistent with the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff, Lori Hafner effective May 2025, according to the master contract of the D-211 United Support Staff, and David Polly effective June 2027, consistent with the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff, and rescind the retirement request of Kathy Cass, that was previously accepted by the Board of Education on February 22nd, 2024. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please?
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. Next is that effective January 6, 2025, until June 30th, 2025, Michael Slife be appointed as Interim Director of Transportation at the Administration Center at a gross annual salary of $148,000, and further that he assume the role of Director of Transportation effective July 1st, 2025. Do I have the right dates?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The motion carries. All right, and our last item on our agenda here is that the Board of Education appoint Dr. Judith Campbell as the Superintendent of Township High School District 211, effective July 1, 2025, and authorizes the Board President and Secretary to sign a performance-based superintendent's contract, as reviewed by the board in closed session for the period beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2029, at an initial base annual salary of $275,000. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please?
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The motion carries. I'd like to thank the board for your time and your diligence in all of the meetings that we had. We had extremely strong candidates, and it was a very difficult choice. But your due diligence and time to find an individual, to build on our prior successes, and continue to maintain and create a legacy of excellence is truly appreciated, and it serves the district well. So I thank you for all of your input and all of your time that you had given to that. Okay, and with that, there's no other business to come before the Board of Education. The Board President declares this meeting of the Board of Education adjourned. Thank you.